Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call the July 15, 2021 Combined Work and Voting Meeting to Order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Elaine, will you please call roll?
Mr. Ambrose.
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Melan?
Here.
Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Dr. Eunice? Mr. Itzki?
Here.
Okay. Here. Okay. Okay, before we get started, there was an executive session this evening at 6:15 for to discuss personnel items. But before we get started, I know there's probably because the very first thing is public comments on agenda items and being that the Health and Safety Plan is an agenda item. So we are going to just kind of clarify some things before we get started. So I'm going to turn my turn and get to you first.
Sure.
Being the chief here.
Sure, we're the solicitor one.
I was gonna say, we lost.
First of all, thank you for your patience, and I apologize that we don't have enough seating here this evening. So, thank you. As far as the the Health and Safety Plan goes, obviously, it was on the website for everyone to review. Obviously, as stated in the thing, that that's a changing, potentially changing document, depending on on circumstances. But I think there are some things that need clarified just by the comments that were received. We had 127 people respond to the survey this time. Last year, we had 2034 response survey when we when we put out the Health and Safety Plan. But we did have 127 people responded. I looking and I believe those results were placed on the website, if I'm not mistaken, and looking at the responses, you know, it appears that overall, people are genuinely accepting of the Health and Safety Plan. There were some questions about certain things. One, I would say, one of the one of the continuing themes from the 127 respondents was the question about synchronous learning and synchronous learning option for next year. While we do think that it served our purposes last year with the state that we were in in trying to make sure that we had options on getting kids in school or not. We are we are not providing the option the same way that we did last year. This year, synchronous learning option will be available if someone has to, one of our children has to be out for related to quarantining due to COVID or something else that we could take on a case by case basis. So we'll take things on a case by case basis. If there is some special circumstance where it makes sense for us to provide synchronous instruction, then we will consider that. The building principals consider that and work with the parents, depending on what the situation is. We did not take that decision lightly. We spoke to our teachers, surveyed our teachers on synchronous learning, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Overwhelmingly, our teaching staff wants our kids in school. Overwhelmingly, our teaching staff felt that our kids are more engaged when they're here, that they perform better academically when they're here. There were a lot of issues that popped up with regards to synchronous instruction last year that, you know, we were relatively lenient on based on the circumstances that that were presented to us. But there were concerns about things that were going on, that the kids weren't engaged, kids weren't, you know, we had kids in bed, you had kids that were left unattended, you had sometimes some inappropriate things that were going on in the background. We had parents that were not engaged and some that were overengaged. You know, when we got to the high school level and talking to the kids, the number one reason that they responded back in the survey that they enjoyed synchronous learning was because they could sleep in. You know, there was a lot of a lot of concern at the secondary level as well about about engagement of students, students that would get online and then not be there. They would disappear, they would check in for those purposes. We had staff that would be working the whole period to try to make sure that the kids were engaged and online, were at a point where it was taking up instructional time. So while I do feel that it certainly served its purpose, and I do feel that there is a place for it. In in recapping the year, we felt that we want to get the kids back in school, and that's how we're going to start the year. But if there are special circumstances, we certainly will consider that based on the fact that we have the ability to do it, and I think we proved that last year. I'm aware of, you know, a majority of the folks here and your take on masking. Some are for, some against. I I I think there was some confusion with the wording that was in the Health and Safety Plan. The district very clearly stated that as of the June 28 lifting of the mandate on masks, that masks are optional here at Central Valley, that we're not going to. Not requiring masks for 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 students or staff, that's an optional thing. The the the, I'll get to the buses in a second, please. The, like I said, the lifting of the mask requirement, we've lifted it here as well. There were comments in there about vaccination requirements. The district is not requiring vaccinations for students. That's. I don't believe that's our role as a district to be vaccinating students, staff, or anyone else. That's a personal choice. Now, if that requirement would change with the with the state, and the state says, just like the other other immunizations that are required, that you that you're required immunization, certainly, the district will take a look at that differently. But as of right now, we have no intent to provide to require vaccinations for for anyone here in the district. And the question about busing, I'm going to turn this over to solicitor. I understand, I understand that you go everywhere in society and nobody's required to wear a mask. I understand we're not requiring kids to wear masks to come to school. I get it. And then, well, if that's the case, why are we asking them to wear them on buses? Okay, I'm going to let the solicitor speak to this. I have talked to legislators, I've talked to the solicitor about this, and he can speak to the advisement that he's given the district. And I'm not going to to debate his his recommendation. But the bottom line is, and like I said, he can speak to this, that, you know, there is still a federal mandate that masks must be worn in public transportation, and that includes public school buses. Okay, so I understand it doesn't add up, it doesn't make sense. But right now, we are required to state that masks are required on our buses. I would not be surprised if that changed between now and the start of school. I reached out to some of our local representatives, they said they would get back to me, they're talking to their people in Harrisburg, and they're trying to get information from Joe Biden's group as to how they feel that's going to be interpreted. I will let you go ahead and speak to that as well.
Yes, as Nick said, this is this law is one that's at the federal level, it is not a state law. It is based on an order issued by the CDC, even under its authority pursuant to.
Can we can we please let the solicitor speak? You have your opportunity for public comment. I appreciate it, thank you.
Pursuant to a federal law, the Public Health and Service Act, which authorizes Surgeon General or Secretary of Health and Human Services to make and enforce such regulations as in their judgment are necessary to address public health concerns. This order was then issued as part of that. It has been interpreted by that federal agency, as well as other state agencies in Pennsylvania, to apply to public school buses as it would just to apply to planes, trains, other modes of public conveyance. I have advised a school district to follow this law. And I understand the difference of opinion that some individuals may have at the wording of this. I stand by my opinion. The school district, that this is a law, should be followed.
All right, so we move into. Okay, so at this point, we will go to public comments on agenda items. Please come to the podium, state your name and your address.
Terry Phillips, Mulberry Lane. May I ask you guys to just please look at other school districts then? Beaver area, Butler, I think Elwood City, please not requiring masks on buses. So how are they able to get away with it?
Sir, I can only speak to the advice I'm giving to my to this school district. That's what they have retained me to do. I cannot speak to what other school districts are doing, I do not represent them.
I would appreciate if the board would then look into how the other schools are getting.
I I will say this, as as, you know, the leader of the school district and not a member of the school board, but that we certainly are not closing the door on any of that stuff between now and the start of the school year. I have reached out, as I said, to lawmakers to find out what their stance is on this. I'm waiting to hear back from them. So we certainly are continuing to look into that question.
Obviously, my name is David Mulligan, I'm not, obviously, not a lawyer, but the CDC is through a federal law, is what you're saying, they are, the CDC could say something applied to an emergency situation or something like that, how did you say that?
Yes. They are authorized to enforce this order, to create this order and enforce it.
Okay. It might be a federal, it's obviously a federal law that that this agency can say something or, but the CDC, and it's not a federal law written by Congress, it's federal law that they have a working there, right?
It's it's a federal law that authorizes.
Someone to make a decision.
Correct. Correct, they're delegating their authority to to make to issue this order.
Correct. Okay, I I believe that, but in my opinion, I might, some other people might have the same opinion here, is that the CDC surely should oversee the state, our state, and our personal government here. We have our own government right here, you are, you are more powerful government than the CDC.
We are not more powerful, more powerful government than the federal government. That is where this is coming from, and we are bound to follow that law.
But that's a gray area where the CDC can make a decision, something like that, in my opinion. And I think if we have a solicitor, they could fight that rule with that really easy. I think so, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Any other comments? I mean, it could be on any of the.
Palladino Bainbridge Drive. Can you please let me know? Okay, so right now, the CDC is stating that unvaccinated children in the fall have to wear masks, while the vaccinated do not have to wear masks.
CDC is recommending that.
Okay, so you heard the wording in your Health and Safety Plan, it's a little bit nervous on that.
It was very clear in the Health and Safety.
Valley is going to be mask option.
I said that we would take it, we said that we would take information from the CDC, the Department of Health. Clearly states, it's clearly states, and well, any of this could change, but as of as of the June 28 lifting of the mask requirement, the district is not requiring masks.
And you're still ready to take that dirty money of 2.5 million?
Money has nothing to do with this, ma'am. Money has nothing to do with this. I said the money has nothing. The money has nothing to do with this. We receive federal money for Title I.
So you don't need this.
You're entitled to your opinion.
Really, a little over $1,000 per kid, and you can't get away with that with your budget? Then someone needs to do another little, someone else needs to take care of the budget.
I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Name is Rick Forster, I live on Atlantic Avenue. Very simple question regarding the students' ride bus, ride the school buses, having to work, excuse me, sorry, having to wear the masks. What if some of the students or those students that ride bus are vaccinated or, you know, have gotten the, yeah, because it's wrong, well, it doesn't, so if they got the gene therapy shot, and if they got that shot, do they still have to wear the mask?
No different than if you try to get on an airplane right now, that they.
I'm sorry, no what?
No different than if you tried to get on an airplane, let's say. The federal requirement is that folks need to have masks on.
Okay, so my only comment to that is, if you have a card showing that you've been, you got the gene therapy shot, you don't have to wear the mask on on multiple.
This federal, this federal order does not differentiate between anyone who is vaccinated and unvaccinated.
Okay.
Requires any individual.
That's that's all I wanted to find out, so, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is James Peters, I reside at 2596 Front Street. Thank you for allowing us this forum. I have two children currently enrolled at Center Grange Primary. I'm a licensed medical professional in Pennsylvania and have been so since 2008. I understand what you're saying about the mandate for being on the school buses. However, being that I'm in charge of the Health and Safety Plan at my current employer, I can tell you that having to review all the peer reviewed studies and such, there is no medical evidence backing up a mandate such as that. And beyond this, I want to take the time to remind the school solicitor the Tenth Amendment, that any power not delegated to the United States of America is left to each individual state. So even though it is a federal mandate, the state of Pennsylvania is not required to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Rachel Schwer, 123 Yorkway, Manaca. This is a lot of this, I just want to ask a question about the buses, because it's public transportation, but nobody can just get on our school buses. You have to be a student at Central Valley, there are specific routes, there are specific kids that they are supposed to pick up, you know, I can't just get on the school bus and ride it. So is it really public transportation?
It. I understand what you're saying.
I mean, I feel like this is all open to interpretation, and you could, you could interpret it more narrowly than you are, and that maybe the school needs to seek additional guidance from somebody other than the school regarding this, which I know Dr. Perry has mentioned.
I have, I have, I have reached out.
So I'm appreciative of that. Now I just have like a couple of questions regarding the plan, just for clarity, if you could. It does say that we're going to be returning to using shared materials. Does that mean that the students will now be going to art, music? They will be going to those classrooms and using materials in those classrooms starting this year, right?
Correct.
Okay. I don't know if you can answer, sir, if the building principals need to answer this. Will the children in the Center Grange and Todd Lane schools be using paper and pencil this year instead of working solely exclusively on an iPad?
Where appropriate, we will.
What does that mean, where appropriate?
I'm not going to say we're not going to use iPads, because.
Okay.
But yes.
I'm just asking that they're not going to be.
It'll be time they'll use paper and pencil.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Russell Russell, 115 East Brook Drive, just looking for a couple of points of clarification. So if this plan is voted in today, is it effective August 1st, because I believe that's what it stated on the draft?
Would it would be, it would be effective when we start school.
Okay, so the reason I'm asking that question is, I'm part of the Central Valley Little Warriors organization, and of course, we have to practice this study now. I'm the pandemic officer for them and also the head of concession, so I'm looking for a little bit of guidance as to what we are and aren't allowed to do.
So you work with our athletic director, and our athletic director will work with you as far as what the expectations are.
Okay.
The use of.
Thank you.
Next.
Barbara Shear, 122 Mango Avenue. Although I appreciate the school board and administration's time in drafting the Health and Safety Plan that balances between normal in-person school and and the safety of students and staff, I have to disagree with the bottom line, which is that all measures in place are contingent on the ever-changing CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health. The parents need to be the final say. Placing health decisions in the hands of government bureaucrats is a very grave mistake. For example, the CDC chose to postpone reviewing the many cases of growing myocarditis in vaccinated people in order to take the day off in observance to Juneteenth as a holiday. We have serious issues with these vaccines that are not being highlighted by the CDC. These issues are growing in children under the age of 18. I urge all of you to watch the video footage of Maddie Deckeray, who participated in the 12 to 15 vaccine trials, her story is heartbreaking. VAERS is now reporting, and let's put this in perspective, 1% to 10% are reported to VAERS. Deaths are now at 9,048. Myocarditis is at 2,200. And if you remember that the last meeting I was at, and I gave you these stats, that number for myocarditis was at 264. So that's a huge leap. Heart attacks, 3,324. Miscarriages, 985. I could go on, but I will stop there. Instead of questioning and challenging the results that I have listed, the CDC is attempting to create policies that possibly punish individuals who have chosen not to vaccinate. As for the Pennsylvania Department of Health, their first response to COVID was to integrate positive COVID-19 patients within nursing homes, the most vulnerable individuals among us, but not before the Pennsylvania Health Secretary removed their own mother from a nursing home right before the orders were executed. My question is this, why would we trust these two organizations when it comes to the health and safety of our children? Both organizations have proven to be biased with their reactions to drafting public health policies that appear to appease politicians and the very turbulent political agendas. I urge the board to vote against the Health and Safety Plan because it gives power to the Pennsylvania Health Department and the CDC. I ask the board to be leaders and take the road less traveled. I ask you to please say no to any binding agreement with the state of Pennsylvania for many, for money that dictates decisions regarding our children's health and our parental rights. If we don't stop this vicious cycle of accepting money from the state in exchange for control of our children's health, for control of our children's education or well-being, then we will never be able to break free from bonds of this slavery. It will only continue, but it will worsen. Critical race theory will be the next battle. We will involve ourselves in another binding agreement that allows our children to question their worth based on their own looks and that of their peers. Again, I ask the board to vote no to any plan that hands over parental rights and decision making to a third party, which would be the CDC and the Department of Health. I thank you for your time, and I yield to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Off topic a little bit, Jen Checkets, by the way, but my phone's blowing up, the live stream's not working.
I got 21 people watching.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just had somebody else, I told them to refresh.
Okay, all right, refresh?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
David Mulligan, last time we were here, we talked about the masks and the vaccines, I did, and this lady has presented that information. She did all the things I wanted to say that didn't have time to write down, I've discovered over the past time, so like she said. And what this guy said stuck with me, that ever since I was here last time, Mr. Zeriski, he said, you're all here, you have to make decisions, you have to discuss it, talk about it, make your decisions. And this man right here talked about how very important part of teaching is seeing a person face to face and doing their expressions on their face and being normal, in my opinion. But what he said really stuck with me is that you folks have to make these decisions, and you have to make decisions based on what you're hearing, what you're told, who you get your advice from, all this stuff. And like she said, your information you're getting is from the CDC, they're the worst person, a doctor, whatever that was, that's now in a federal position now. Those made the worst decisions with the with the best information at hand at that time. And like this man over here said, I don't know, I don't know the Tenth Amendment so much, but but I do know that the federal government, through an agency, they can maybe make up a rule or something, and everybody thinks it's a law, but it really wouldn't play out. You would win that case, I believe, in my opinion. And that is the fact that we we are, and like he said, he had to make, go, I had to make these decisions, but we weren't here, nobody was here. So you had to go by the CDC and Dr. Levine to tell you what to do. Well, you made the decision, and we all think it's the wrong decision. So here you are again to make the decision, we're here now, all these people are here now. I don't have chairs for all the people here right now. And so the decision is being made, to make the right decision right now.
I guess, I don't want to speak for everyone, so everyone can tell me if I'm right or wrong, but I think what most everyone that is talking about the CDC wants to add to you guys is if you would consider taking the language about following the CDC.
Nothing in the language says we're following the CDC.
And I think that's all they want to.
It says we'll take information from the CDC. It does not say.
They want to know that you're willing to make this decision that's best for the parents, and that's what you're saying for making the mask.
I'm trying to make the best for the kids.
Kids, that's what I meant.
Thank you.
Solicitor just said that he's following the CDC.
Right.
But I'm fault, that's not what I, hang on one second. So what I explained before was, that is an order that has the force of law behind it. Okay, there are, right, I, hang on.
At him speak, and then you'll have your choice, chance to speak too.
I'd also like to clarify some things that the CDC is recommending right now that this district is not doing. Right now, the CDC recommends that masks continue to be worn in schools. They recommend that schools do a staggered schedule to do an A and B schedule, for example. They recommend social distancing, continued social distancing, three feet apart. District has decided not follow that advice at this time. Not that, because, sorry. Because this, and as I've told the board, that part of the CDC's recommendation is simply guidance, it does not have the force of law behind it. So they are free to accept that advice, or they're free to take their own decisions into account. So I do want to clarify that the district is not absolutely wedded to what the CDC is saying beyond the legal authority regarding buses.
How we doing? My name is Josh Himes, live on Poplar Avenue, just moved back to the area from, been all over the world, I'm proud to be back. I talked my family to moving back to Beaver County and coming back to Central Valley where I'm born and raised at. So this, these homes, these topics hit really home with me. One of the things that that we're built on is obviously freedom, and taking some of the freedoms away is just something I'll never stop fighting for, from the mass freedom. All these, the recommendations, I'm sorry, I'm a, I volunteer at our fire department here in our in our town, our community to give back, I'm a licensed healthcare professional as well, working in the hospital. Some of the medical freedoms is is just taken away from American rights in general. That is our, what we're built on is having the freedom. So whether somebody gets something or doesn't get something, it shouldn't be a problem, and it shouldn't force somebody to segregate somebody, because we shouldn't enable a segregation. That's 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 problematic from the start. Whether somebody does something or some doesn't, doesn't, doesn't do something, should be their choice, mommy and daddy's choice for their kids, whether they want to get a vaccine, don't get a vaccine, wear a mask, don't wear a mask, it should be your choice, period. So some of the some of the topics, it's just really bothersome, we have three kids, and I'm sorry for the disruption of our kids, I have three hundred and three years old that are going to become into school here, and I'm proud to come back to my hometown. But some of the rules, if they're not going to be, we're going to be going off recommendations or, those aren't federal laws, those aren't, I understand the laws, obviously, I have a master's, master's degree education, so I I get the whole school system, I understand wholeheartedly, but these aren't laws, these are recommendations and people that give you like guidelines to recommend and follow these guidelines. But we are the people, we're the strong, we're the, we're, we're a strong community. That's that's where I'm born and raised from, right? We're from a strong area, and I love, I love Central Valley, I'm proud to be from here. But we, as as the community, as the people, should be stronger to have the backbone and make the rules and pave the way. If we don't want the kids wearing masks on buses, it's not, it's not federal law, these are state buses, these are our our districts, it could be our rules, our ways, we could pave the way. So just keep on fighting, guys, and keep going to battle, and we're not going to stop. Thank you.
Patterson, 111 Pine Haven Court. So I'm just looking here at the document that you posted on our website, on the Valley website, and it says, district plans are subject to change based on the PA Department of Health and the CDC guidelines. So I think. So I think what Jennifer was saying, and a lot of us are saying is, if you're not basing off of that, can we remove that statement?
Remove the statement that says that we will follow the CDC, that it could change?
That the plans are going to change based on the PA Department of Health and the CDC guidelines. Why don't you just have those topics at the meetings? You're saying it's not based off the CDC guidelines, but you're saying it's subject to change based off the CDC guidelines.
I will say this, I can't predict the future. I mean, let's go back, let's go back a year and a half. Nobody could have predicted what would have happened and what we needed to do in order to put our kids in school. And I think this district did everything that we could to pave the way and put our kids in school. So I think that statement, I know the statement on the document leaves some, something open for something that I can't predict, like if something comes down that, you know, forces us to take a different look at our plan, then certainly, you know, we're going to do that. I mean, that's, I can't say definitely, I understand that, but I-
That come August 17th, or whatever the case may be, you know, and we're back to masking, and we're back because of the CDC guidelines.
I think this district and the district leadership around this table is more in line with your thinking than you're giving them credit for.
I think, I would-
Same, at the same time, at the same time, same time, we have to make sure that we follow what our legal advisors tell our district that we need to do in order to make sure that we are not putting ourselves in a bad situation.
Understood.
With all due respect, I don't yell at you whenever you try to speak, I'm trying to have a conversation, please, go ahead.
Understood, and I wanted to side note that I am super proud and appreciative of being a part of the Central Valley School District. I am from Beaver, originally born and raised, lived here eight years ago, nine years ago, I've never been more prouder, whether everyone agrees with that, but I really feel that way in how you handle this pandemic. I think that with, again, what you're saying is that you're just leaving it open to take that route that we're asking you not to.
I would rather leave, I would rather leave that much open than to declare that this is what it's going to be, and then in three months, we come around and tell you something different.
And so being, saying, saying subject to change isn't enough, but keeping subject to change based on the CDC guidelines?
We could discuss that.
You know what I mean? I think that's where everybody is, there's fear in people because of that, so that's all it is.
Thank you.
I need to restate my name and address.
That's okay.
Okay, I just want to circle back around to something the school solicitor said about how we aren't following some of the CDC guidelines and rules and regulations and mandates, but we are following this one for the bus. Doesn't one bad apple spoil the whole bushel? If we're not following one, why are we following the other ones?
You're going back again, once again, we're talking about a recommendation versus what is a mandate, and as of right now, that is a, the bus is a mandate.
Right.
The others are recommendations. As I said before, I will continue to reach out and get further clarification, see if that's going to change between now and the start of the school year. That does, and we certainly will communicate the district's stance on whether or not we will require anybody to wear masks or facial coverings on buses. I can tell you that if it's lifted, our stance right now is that we will not require kids to wear masks on buses.
All right, I just want to tell you guys that I understand, you know, sometimes, right now, you guys want to do what is politically and legally expedient, and sometimes the politically and legally expedient thing is not the right thing.
Amen.
I think what everybody in this room is asking you to do is the right thing. While I understand the school solicitor is asking for the expedient thing both politically and legally, I do not believe that's the right thing, and I do believe the district should fight it, and based on the Tenth Amendment, while I understand that people use that there's a federal mandate making you people do this, that does not exist, and I would implore you guys to seek a second opinion, please.
I just want to, Barbara Shear again, I just want to reiterate what this young lady said. It's the last line, "The document is subject to change based on PA Department of Health and CDC guidelines," and we're going to trust you remove that from the document, that if you all believe and you're willing to listen to us as a community, then you're going to do the right thing if something happens down the road. So we don't think we need that little parachute to like protect everyone. We think that that should be removed, and that we should go forward as a community, as we the people, exercising our rights to our own personal freedoms, and that we know, we're all responsible adults, we know what could and could not happen. We're willing to trust you, but we don't need the CDC and the Department of Health who are political hacks and have an agenda that they're adhering to. But that removed-
Good comments, no, thank you.
Karen Forster, I live on Atlantic Avenue, and I'm not going to argue about the mandate or whatever, because I know some people feel they have to follow these certain things, and things could change. Louisiana just made it mandatory that the whole state has to wear masks again, I don't know if you all heard that. So, but I'm going to tell you that I'm a school bus driver for Central Valley, and I'm not speaking on behalf of my employer, speaking as a, I'm also a parent, and when COVID came around this area in November, I got COVID, and I got sick, I was very, very sick for 12 days. However, my first year working as a school bus driver here, I got the flu, and I was hospitalized for five days with flu. School bus drivers, kids carry germs, and you pick them up. My belief is, I got it, and I'm immune to it now. My other point I was going to make, well, I got it as a bus driver, wearing a mask with kids who were supposed to wear a mask, and I say supposed to because I can't see over the seats, and if they go in their seats, they take their mask on, and I know that because when I look up in the mirror and I see little Johnny talking to Joey and his mask down, and I look up and say, put your mask on, and it comes up. So their masks aren't on anyways. Most, some of the kids complied. Also, my personal belief is, I think it's dangerous to drive with a mask on, and you're asking school bus drivers to drive while having their nose and their mouth covered, restricted air.
Fogging the glasses.
Fogging, fogging my glasses. And being responsible for, I pray, so I pray for the souls of my children that I take to school every day, and I'm responsible for them. I bring them to school safely, and I take them home safely, and I take my job very seriously, and I just think if you can take that to whoever you need to take it to, that I don't think it's a very good mandate. Thank you.
Felix Smallberry Lane, so a few things, this is Butler School District. On the section A, they have, masks are not required by the Butler School District, any individual who wishes to wear a mask is welcome to wear one at the school as school district functions. No mention of CDC. We could strike that from our proposed plan, it does not need to be in there. We are obviously asking that you strike that from our plan. Also, Fourth Amendment of the Constitution, forcing a person to wear a mask without the consent is a violation of the Fourth Amendment. Further, gathering vital statistics such as taking someone's temperature is a violation of a person's right to privacy. Violation of this protection can result in actions being reported to the Department of Justice, which is required by law to investigate civil rights violations. No law is valid or lawful that violates the Constitution. Marbury versus Madison, U.S. Supreme Court, any law repugnant to the Constitution is void, it has no force of law and can be ignored. The CDC is not a legislative body, they do not make laws, legislatures make laws, anything else is against the Constitution and can be ignored. No health order, no emergency order, no state of emergency, no municipal ordinance, policy may suspend or violate the Constitution, period.
Thank you. Any other comments on agenda items?
I do want to say thank you for your input, regardless of how the board votes tonight with regards to the plan, we certainly will take your comments into consideration. The plan can be adjusted as clearly states, and if we make any adjustments between now and the start of the school year, we certainly will make that note, and make any revisions done on the website. So I truly anticipate that something's going to change with regards to the whole bus question by the time we get to the start of the school year, and I will continue to seek information from other areas to see if there's any difference of opinion with regards to what we're mandated to do by federal, by the federal statute. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hannah Bettors, I live on Bridget Street, and the mask thing, my son was in second grade, and he was outside with his mask on playing soccer, and he came home that day with school, he couldn't breathe anymore, he was having a hard time breathing, and he came home, and he told me that he was having a hard time breathing. So later that night, having a hard time breathing again, and so I called the pediatrician, they're like, I went in, and they came to my house, and, you know, they were checking like all his stuff, and he ended up being okay, but I just think the mask thing is just not healthy. And I just, now he has sports-induced asthma, and I don't think he would have ever had that if he wasn't outside running around with masks on. So I just think it's just, these kids are, you know, when you prohibit their breathing when they're doing sports and activities, it's just not healthy.
Thank you. Continue on with the meeting now. So minutes to approve the voting session, minutes from the June 17th, 2021, would be found on attachment A, any discussion?
So move.
Okay, so Mr. Bloom, make the motion. Second, Mr. Ross, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Treasury report, Mr. King.
Bills and reports are submitted for approval. A, pay bills, confirm the June 2021 general fund payments in the amount of $3,113,059.50. Attachment B. Two, confirm the June 2021 cafeteria fund payments in the amount of $51,823.95. Attachment C. B, to approve the June 2021 Berkeimer report, attachment D. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Second, Mr. Moad, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Executive session announcement.
I did.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Sorry.
I'm on your pique there.
Your lips, I thought you won.
There is nothing under board policy items. Mr. O'Neil, you have anything?
We have nothing at this time, no.
Okay, and that brings us to education, Mr. Ross.
Number one, to approve outreach services contract agreement with the Western Pennsylvania School for the Blind Children at a cost of $98 per hour, subject to terms of the agreement beginning August 30th, $20,021 through June 10th, $20,022. Attachment E. Two, to approve resolution, $20,021, $20,022, declaring an emergency under Section 520.1 of Public School Code, excuse me. Attachment F. Three, to approve the Central Valley District Health and Safety Plan, attachment G. So move.
Okay. Mr. Zeriski, what?
Mr. Bloom did, yeah.
Oh, okay, you guys are going ahead of me too quickly here, all in favor.
I would like to mention one-
I was going to say, do you have any discussions?
Yes, I do feel that on the health and safety plan, that I would ask that it is on, under review under the August meeting, pending the information gathering that this board has requested, and pending some of the information that the public has requested that we review this health and safety plan again in our August meeting.
Sure, agree. I can agree to.
Submit this by the July 30th deadline, but still having time to review and revise any new information before the start.
Right, once it's sent in, and once it's sent in-
Yes.
We're in, then we can make any changes you want.
Correct.
Any other board members? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Dr. Perry.
So, Mr. Zeriski recommended that we, after the vote tonight, when we get back to the August board meeting, we revisit the plan based on any new information that comes between now and then, and I said that would certainly meet the requirement of us getting the plan in by the July 30th deadline, and then after that, we can make any, at any point in time to the plan, so it would fall in compliance with that.
So it would still be submitted to the state as is?
It'll be submitted to the state as is if approved tonight, and any changes after that, we just make the changes. All we have to do is put it on the public website after that. Mike, did I answer your question?
I think you did, but it doesn't seem to have any relevance to postponing the vote.
We're not postponing the vote, they're going to take the vote. They're going to take the vote, and what he's saying is, after the vote tonight, he's asking that in August, we revisit the plan to see if there's any changes between now and the start of the school year, based on the information that the public has provided tonight, and based on any new information that comes out specifically with the whole busing situation and face coverage.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Are we allowed to take?
My line is a question.
It's up to the board.
No.
Lana?
Do we want a?
Is it possible to put a motion to dismiss that paragraph? Can that go for a motion to dismiss it?
For a meeting.
Or alter the sentence, yeah.
Yeah.
Or alter it, and not pass it through as is. Either dismiss it or alter it.
That's up to the Board of Education, if the Board of Education votes tonight to pass this plan.
So that's my question, is it, I'm asking the board that, I guess, is it possible to dismiss it or alter it? I think, right now.
Sorry, I can, let me answer that.
Because I believe that's what the mass force of the 67 people here of this body is what we're requesting.
Right now, they're, and I'll explain this whole thing, right now, we have the motion on the floor to approve the plan as written, as you saw it presented on the website and as included in the packet.
So how do we put a motion on the floor to dismiss that paragraph?
Right now, if the board wishes to pass an amended plan with that language omitted or changed, a board member are altered, a board member can make that motion, and the board can vote on that.
It only takes one board member to make that motion.
We have the vote of motion on the floor right now.
Has to be motioned and seconded, and then voted on.
Yes, so I guess-
It's already been a motion made and seconded, it's up for a vote.
Well, yes, you can amend a motion that's on the floor.
That's right, it could be amended, am I correct?
That's up to the-
We have to accept the amendment.
I'm just wondering who's-
That would require, that would require the board, a majority vote of the board to amend.
To take a stand and do that for the community.
For the children.
For the children. They're here. Yell out.
I was going to say, we can't keep having this back and forth, back and forth, because that's not-
And just settle it out, I mean, let's just settle it.
A call for the question. Have the vote.
We have a vote. We have the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Technology, Mr. Moad.
That being, let me go back and say one thing, that being said, we certainly will revisit the plan as we get into August, as we said we would.
Mr. Moad.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you.
This is our meeting, we all appreciate people yelling out insults, that's rude, and we've been more than accommodating, we've been more than accommodating, and we appreciate everyone having time to have comments here, but yelling out insults to the board is very inappropriate.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, sir, what?
Yelling out insults to the board is very inappropriate, and more than professional and accommodating.
I apologize for my, I apologize for my insults.
Nothing with technology right now.
Go on.
I apologize for the statement about- I apologize for the statement about nobody had a backbone, stand up and fight for the community or for the children. So my apology about that, but I think everything that's happened here and how the board's handling this is inappropriate. But again, I apologize.
And that is it. That is the end. That is the end.
An apology. I apologize for my inappropriate.
Your apology accepted. Moving on, athletics, Mr. King.
To approve, number one, to approve Dr. Amy D. Antonio as a team doctor for the 2021 football season at a stipend of $1,000. He wrote. Number two, to approve three-year contract with Jamie's Physical Therapy as a middle school trainer. Terms and conditions for contract. Number three, to approve Drew Ballman as a head girls soccer coach for the 2021 fall season at a stipend of $3,500. Pending receipt, review and acceptance of all clearances. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ross, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Extracurricular, Dr. Guinness doesn't have anything. Leading us to buildings and grounds, Mr. Zeritsky.
Under building and grounds, number one is to approve and confirm the following building usage request, the building, the organization, the date and their purpose. And number two is to approve to authorize Crabtree Roybon Associates to proceed with the design of the proposed additions and renovations to the Center Grange Primary School at a fee of 5.95% of the estimated cost of work. Ms. Bell Castro, may I request that we have two second, two different motions on these two items, please?
Yes, we can. So do I have a motion on item number one?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Moad, all in favor for motion number one, item number one?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion for item number two? Mr. Bloom?
Second. Second.
Mr. Ross?
Roll call.
All in favor?
Discussion.
On a roll call.
Okay, stop. All right. Discussion.
I just want to review a couple of things to understand this motion here. Under the building and grounds, as the chair of the committee, we did a walk down as a committee. We walked down the high school, we walked down the middle school. What we, what our findings were with the building principles and everything, we felt that the committee as a whole felt that the entire board should join in and do a walk down. Dr. Perry invited the architect and the engineer to come down to clarify certain things and help explain a little bit more in depth what it takes to do some repairs and renovations to those, those two schools. Gave some handouts and everything else like that. Also, at that meeting, we had some recommendations that came from the, both our architect and our engineer about prioritizing projects. Moving on to the, this, the Center Grange project over here, when are we looking to go to bid? Do we have any timeline, Lana, when we're looking to go to bid for this?
We just told about the August meeting about the finance, finance, the bond. We got that tonight.
Are you asking me?
I'm asking anybody that might know when we, we're looking to go to bid.
So if indeed you engage the architect to do the work, the next, the next phase would be to secure a bond that would probably be done at the August board meeting. And then, then the design phase would go into play. You're probably looking at, I mean, we were provided a timeline. I want to say something into like January, February of next year that you would start to seek bids.
And when would we, when is the objective completion time? What, what is the ideal scenario with that?
I don't have a, I don't have a complete timeline for the, for the length of the project as of yet.
Okay, and then lastly, for me, this, I understand, completely understand how this works and how they're paid and everything else like that. But this to me is a very, very open, open fee. Like, there's not a not to exceed here. We're basically authorizing 5.95% of what?
So the, the, the not to exceed would come with the bond? So you would borrow money on a not to exceed number as far as this 5.9% of the cost of the work? So the cost of the work is the construction itself. It is not any of the soft costs associated with a project. So if a project costed, cost, I'm making a number up. If a project cost 10 million in total to do, that's everything, construction, soft cost, that 5.9% is not, 5.95%. Now, understand that fee is just for the architects to design the building. Okay? That fee would not be on the total amount of the project of the 10 million. It would be on what they call the cost of the work, which is the construction cost that the architects are predicting the cost of the job, so to speak. The actual cost, so the 5.95% would be on that number. The bid number, whatever comes in when you go out to bid on the projects, okay, is not subject to the 5.95%, okay? Whatever the cost of the project is, the cost of the project is. 5.95% is their fees. The architects for, the engineers and everybody to design the project.
So I think that this is just, and I, I am 100% for all-day kindergarten. I am not at any percent for putting 11, 12 million dollars into our newest school. And I feel that we are not following the recommendations of our architect and our engineers that we need to review and take a harder look as what I thought what we were looking to do at our Manaca Middle School and at our high school for some things that need, that are priorities that need addressed. And I know that there's some talk about trying to lump them together, but I don't think we're in the financial situation to do that. So I just wanted to voice my opinion on that. I have, I, I thank that, that the committee that went and all their tons of time putting in efforts for this. But I feel that this is not the right time with material costs going through the roof, with things being pushed back. I think we are gonna see cost overruns that are gonna blow our minds. That is my, my opinion and that's why I'll be voting no for this. Thank you, Ms. Bell Castro.
And just to further inquire, you're talking 5.95, that's approximately, what, 450,000?
Six plus.
No, it's on, on, on the proposed cost of the work.
Right, but dollar figure.
590,000.
590.
Almost 600,000, yes.
That's correct.
I just have a comment. I think all-day, everyday kindergarten on its own will be good for the community. It's good for the district. But like Mr. Zeritsky said, I don't think this is the time for it. We have, we have other priorities in this district. I, I have a hard time after we walk through those buildings knowing that we put our teachers and our students in those buildings in those conditions. I know this is going through tonight. And I hope that the things that the committee brought forward come to fruition. You know, I hope we get students back from Baton Academy and we get some of that money back. I hope that we have more development in the, in the community so that our revenues go up. But I don't base large financial decisions on hope. We, I'm on the finance committee. The recommendation from our financial auditor was to not add any debt to our budget at this time. The recommendation from the state auditor was to not add anything to our debt at this time. As a finance committee, we recommended not to move forward with this based on our budget projections. It's sound financial sense to not base things on hope, but to have things that you know are coming. We've had a lot of growth in this district, but for every bit of growth we've had, we've had businesses leave that offset any growth that we've had. So our revenues haven't increased. I know people see all the things that are coming into the township, but we haven't had revenue growth. So there's nothing to suggest that we will be having it. No matter how many building permits are out there, there's nothing to suggest it. In 2016, this board, with the exception of Ms. Bell Castro, who's not on the board, committed to a plan of renovations to our district schools. We started with the highest priority, which was Todd Lane. The next priority was the Manaca Middle School. And then the next one was the high school. And after that, we were looking at all-day kindergarten. To spend this money now and make a 20-year commitment to a bond with this money is kicking the can down the road on the middle school and the high school. And in my opinion, I think you're putting a nail in the coffin of the middle school. I was in this, I was on this board when we merged. It was a priority for us to make sure we had a physical presence in the Manaca community. We wanted that school there. We wanted the middle school concept. We spent extra money to make sure we had the middle, middle school concept that has been phenomenally successful, winning the Don Icorn Awards. I think we're putting all that in jeopardy right now. And I think what's gonna happen, and I hope it doesn't, like I said, I have to hope and I have to make sure as we go through this that what was originally tagged as a 2 to 3 million dollar project for all-day, everyday kindergarten is now ballooned to 11 million. I think there's frivolous spending in there. And I want to make sure as we go through this process that none of the spending is frivolous. I think if we're gonna do this, we need to do what needs to be done to have all-day, everyday kindergarten. I will be voting no for this because I think it jeopardizes the long-term financial future of our district.
He wants these calling.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bloom.
I call for the question.
Asking you to call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Roll call, please.
Roll call?
Before you do, before you do, Lana, I'd like to speak to some of the things that Mr. Moad and Mr. Zeritsky said. I know that the, the finance committee recommended. And if they want to spend that money, whatever that number is, whatever we get, the estimates are for both of these schools, whether it be the high school and the middle school. All right, let's just say, because we went through a 20 million dollar renovation down here at Todd Lane. So if you do 20 million here and you do 20 million or 15 million or whatever that numbers are at the middle school, I heard the finance committee and the chairman, I think he's still on the, on the phone here, we don't know how we're gonna pay for that. If you borrow that money, okay? Say you borrow 30 million dollars to do both schools. Just throwing a number out there for right now, okay? The two big, and we know that that's an expensive proposition. It has not been explained to me by that committee that you're on, how you're gonna pay for it. I'm, wait, wait, before you answer that, I'm saying to you, before you answer that, I'm saying to you and to the public, I'm a taxpayer also. And I don't know what you people know and you don't know what's going on. We as a district are sending every year, because we have 34 youngsters going to Baton Academy, we're spending $500,000 to send our kids to be educated by somebody else across the river. Okay? We provide the transportation. We get no say in their curriculum. We get no say in anything other than the fact you pay the bill, as I am, to send 34 youngsters to Baton Academy, $500,000 every year for five years now, it goes up. All right? Also in the works that's going on over there. Amber is looking, because they get affected more so than anybody because the majority of their youngsters of Baton Academy is by Amber's students, okay? Right now Baton Academy, VA Cyber is in negotiation with Quigley Catholic, the possibly least Quigley Catholic and/or by Quigley Catholic High School. And now, take your, we go to, it goes to sixth grade over there. All right? So now you're gonna have, if, if it goes through, all right, and I'm not saying it is, but there's a real good shot at it in talking with the people at Amber, because there's solicitors working hand in hand, trying to figure out what they're gonna do over there. That means you're gonna have seven, eight, nine at least over there. So once your kids are over there, they want to stay there because they make friends.
Dan.
And they, they make friends and they want to stay with their friends, okay? And they like the surrounding. It isn't like surrounding over there. You ever been there? So now, instead of that 500,000, if this goes through, those kids stay there, you're gonna be paying a million dollars a year. I'm looking at as a taxpayer and an educator, next educator. I don't want somebody else educating our kids. I want our people here, our teachers, our staff, educating your youngsters here, not transport, putting them over across the river. We say if we borrowed that, let's say we borrowed 11 million dollars to do that building. From what I understand, and I know, Mr. Ambrose, you're on the line. You're, you're the chairman of the finance committee. I know you know the dollars and cents and the percentages. My understanding is, if we borrow that money, our payment on that money of 11 million dollars will be $350,000. So we're pen, spending 500,000 for that, for our kids to go over there. It's gonna cost us to do the renovation, say 11 million dollars. We pay 350 for the bond, our, our interest on the bond. So that gives us maybe a couple of hundred thousand. But it makes more sense to me that we would be saving some money plus keeping our kids here. Because if you take the survey, which we did, the majority of those people, well, they want their kids here. And that, maybe some of you people are involved that I, I don't know. But I know the people that said, if we had all-day, everyday kindergarten, and I also checked with other school districts that were sending their kids there because they didn't have all-day, everyday. All right? So, once, and I think the last school, I talked to a board member down there that was on the board at the time, was Beaver. Beaver was sending their kids over. Without, once they went to full day, they have no kids going over there anymore, all right? Because of all-day, everyday. That's how it starts. It starts with going to kindergarten, liking it there, making friends. Let it just stay till sixth grade, then they come back. All right? If, if you go by testing, every school district in Beaver County is doing all-day, everyday and also doing, some schools, maybe I think it's five or six, that are doing pre-k. We're still doing half a day. Half a day is, is deceiving also. You're going, we're sending our kids over here on a good day for two hours. The morning, two hours in the afternoon. That's telling me that the other school districts are having their youngsters in kindergarten getting four and a half more hours of education than our youngsters. So then at the end of third grade, whenever we are tested, and I can show you, I got it right here. I got a piece of paper to show you.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't mean to cut you off, but I mean, can we, unless Mr. Ambrose has something to say on finance, I think we need to just move on and take the.
I can appreciate that, but I mean, I heard a lot of clapping going on for the comment that was made. I'm showing you how we could pay for it. The, the committee is not showing you how they're gonna pay for, say you borrow 30 million dollars. You know what's gonna happen? Your taxes will continue to go out, all right? And I don't know where that, it's gonna be, if you borrowed, I think, 37 million, I think it was a million dollars a year to pay on that 30 million, 37 million, okay, to do both buildings. It's a million dollars you're gonna pay in interest. I have not been told by that committee how they're gonna pay for that.
Mr. Ross, this committee never presumed to say that we should take out a loan and do those two schools. What this committee said was not to spend the money that we have and make a 20-year commitment, continue to build our fund balance and when appropriate, when we have the appropriate funds, then do the renovations that need done. We are not proposing at all.
You think you're gonna have enough funds to pay, pay for a 30 million dollar loan?
We don't know that. We're, that's, oh, no.
I don't think.
President.
I'm making a comparison.
Gentlemen.
And we do have the money to pay on, on 11 million.
We're kicking the can down the road on the other two buildings.
My close debate, it's the emotion and a two-thirds of over.
Okay, so, moving on. Moving on.
Okay.
Colleen, please call a roll. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Moad?
No.
Mr. O'Neil?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Guinness?
No.
Mr. Zeritsky?
No.
Mr. Ambrose?
Before I vote on this, I just want to clarify one thing. Mr. Ross said about 300 and something odd thousand. At 2.5% on 11 million dollars, at 2.5%, our payment is about 275,000. With the fact that interest rates are the lowest that they're ever gonna be, and now's never the good time for anybody, but financially, we're getting a bargain at 2.5%. In addition to that, we, we are in a much better position financially than we were when we initially talked about this in November, December, and January. So consequently, financially, I don't have a problem with this, and I know Mr. Moad was hoping all the construction would come through. We've got a potential of 300 single-family dwellings that are gonna be built in the next three to four years. With that, I vote yes to the project.
Mr. Castro?
Yes. Question carries. Moving on?
Yep.
Moving on, personnel, Mr. Bloom.
Yes. I need a motion to, I have eight items. To approve Rachel Watts as a high school guidance counselor, Step 1 Master's Degree in accordance with CVEA Agreement effective August 24, 2021, pending receipt, review, and acceptance of all clearances. To approve Elizabeth Damp, music vocal teacher, Step 1 Bachelor's Degree in accordance with the CVEA Agreement effective August 24, 2021, pending receipt, review, and acceptance of all clearances. To approve Lauren Leon as a high school business teacher, Step 2 Bachelor's Degree in accordance with the CVA Agreement effective August 24, 2021, pending receipt, review, and acceptance of all clearances. To approve Danielle Thompson for the secondary English teacher, Step 1 Bachelor's Degree in accordance with the CVA Agreement effective August 24, 2021, pending receipt, review, and acceptance of all clearances. To approve an FMLA request for an elementary teacher from August 30, 2021 through November 5, 2021. To approve Erica Kane as a German teacher, Step 1 Masters in accordance with the CVA Agreement effective August 24, 21, 2021, pending receipt, review, and acceptance of all clearances. And to approve Jessica Santella, high school chemistry teacher, Step 1 Master's Degree in accordance with the CVA Agreement effective August 24, 2021, pending receipt, review, and acceptance of all clearances. And to approve an unpaid leave request for an elementary teacher pursuant to Article 7, Section D of the collective bargaining agreement. I so move.
Second.
Mr. Zeritsky, second. All in favor?
All right.
Pose. Question carries. And there is nothing under finance, so I'm going to ask Dr. Perry if he has anything this evening.
Just like to thank the community for your input tonight. Continue to come, continue to provide your input as we move forward. I also want to thank the members of the Personnel Committee. I know that you sat in on a lot of interviews. I believe we've hired one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, sorry, 10, 10 new hires here in the last month and a half. And I know it's a lot of work, and I truly want to thank my administrators who are helping to organize and run that process. I know it takes a lot of work, and you're to be commended for bringing quality people in to our districts. I want to thank all of you.
Okay, all right. So then I'm going to ask board members if they have any comments. Mr. Zeritsky, I'll start with you and just go around.
I want to thank the public for coming out and encourage that we'll do the right thing, and we'll do the right thing for the entire community. Not everything is going to be your way, my way. We have to look at everything in the whole picture, and that's why I ask that not to make a knee-jerk reaction and make changes and request changes on this floor, that we have information that Dr. Perry is waiting for from the state, our state representatives. We have information that our solicitor is gonna go and dig a little bit deeper into, and that we make wise decisions, not knee-jerk reactions. And I ask that you understand that and have faith in this board.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes, two things. To go along with thanking the administrators for helping with the interview process, I'd like to also thank the students that have sat in. I mean, they made, they made it possible for us to do the lesson, the demo lessons. They did a great job. They're very receptive and they gave us good input. Second comment I have is, was we learned earlier tonight, the proposed cost for the middle school roof has come in lower than we anticipated if we go with a certain contractor. So it's not, it's not all gloomy, though. Thank you.
Mr. Ross?
I'd just like to echo what Mr. Zeritsky and Mr. Bloom said, and also thank you people for showing your interest in, in the educational system that we have here and the, in what we're doing. And I, as I said before, you know, I know you, there's a group here, and you voiced your opinion and did a real nice job with presenting facts and information, and I do appreciate you guys doing your homework and feeding that information to us guys here. And as I said a long time ago, you know, we as a board try to make the best educational decision for our kids, okay? And it's not always everything that what somebody wants, you know, because you have the other 50%. You're never right here, you know? You're never right. Whatever decision you make, and you saw some of the decisions tonight, you know, some you're in favor, somebody else said this, and some saying, oh, okay, and you might have learned something else tonight, you know, with something maybe I said or somebody else said. But I do appreciate you. But we don't very seldom get what we have here in the last few meetings that we've been having, and I do appreciate hearing your input. I mean that from the bottom of my heart as a part of the community also. And I'm always open to listen what you guys have to say, but we've got to make some decisions and we listen to what our solicitor says, our superintendent and the rest of the board, and the other people in the community also. They may not be here tonight, but trust me, the phone does ring when you're out shopping or church or whatever. People do give their two cents also to us, and it may not be exactly what you want or what I want, you know what I mean? But you listen, you try to make the best decision possible for our kids is what we do. But again, I want to appreciate you coming the last few weeks and showing your interest.
Starting now.
I'd like to thank everybody for your input, and I just wanted to make the comment. I didn't hear one thing that was brought up that wasn't discussed right here in this boardroom behind closed doors. We do listen, we do appreciate your input, and I think you'll be surprised how this too shall pass.
Mr. King?
I'd just like to thank you for all coming tonight. We appreciate your input, and I agree with everything that the other gentleman said also.
I'll just say it's great to see people here, it really is. We encourage you to keep coming. You know, big topics come up, we fill the room, and then it kind of dies down. But there's a lot that happens in every meeting, have a lot of public discussion, so it's great to have public input. Otherwise, we are just kind of relying on what we hear and what's brought to us. So it's good to see people here, please. So I know it takes up a lot of time, but please continue to make the effort. We're glad to see you here.
I too. I just want to thank everyone for their coming and your input. I read every comment that was.
I did.
He turned him into us. I read every comment that was on the surveys, and I appreciate the input. And I am, speaking as a former educator, I am so happy these kids are coming back to school in person, in person. So with that, we are done and accept, is it open comments or?
Yeah.
Public. We're gonna keep, it's basically it's public comments on anything other than that was on the agenda, so, I mean, like.
We gotta go.
One last quick thing, guys.
I know the critical race theory. From my experience, I've been blessed to travel the world. I speak multiple languages, and I see different races from all other sides. Introducing something like that is just detrimental to the future of our kids. Critical race theory, it's bringing up something that shouldn't be brought up. We're one as America, we're one. I don't care what color you are, black, white, purple, coconut, pink, it doesn't matter. You're American, and that's the way we should be looked at. I was on tour for the last month with all different colors, and they all said the same thing. Quit talking about race, you make an issue out of nothing. There is no problem. Having an issue, I mean, I'm from Manaca, I was, my best friend was black, I didn't, that doesn't matter. I'm brown, you could be any color, doesn't matter. But you're in America, so just going forward, guys, please take in consideration that I think it's setting us up for failure by taking that talk. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'm here for critical race theory too, because it is in our middle schools. The video that Cindy's daughter Paige had referenced the last, or I think it was two meetings ago, about the little white girl, there's a video that I was given by Brian Dolph, he's the middle school principal, he had sent it to me, C.C. Casey Hicks, and you as well on it. It is actually called Being 12, the number 12. You can find it on YouTube, and it states underneath the video, because I'm Latino, I can't have money, question mark, kids on race. It shows different races of Hispanic, Latino, African-American. I have a video right here if you'd like to listen to it, it's about four minutes long. If not, I wrote down exactly what this little white girl with blonde hair states, and it took me quite a while, but I wrote it down. I think white privilege is the idea that in your everyday life, you are getting treated differently and sometimes with more respect, or people trust you more, or they have more expectations of you, that you might be smarter, or you might be wealthier because you are white. Now, mind you, this is her word for word. It makes me feel guilty sometimes, even though it is not my fault. I feel guilty for having a privilege that I don't deserve. This is in my kid's advisory class. That's supposed to be about bullying. What about racism? How did this get into our school? Please, please tell me. Please, do you have a board that votes this? I mean, like, come on, yell at me, do something, come on.
Yeah, I'll speak there.
Please.
Part of our advisory program, we teach citizenship, cultural competency, everything that we do for diversity. That video was chosen to start conversations with our kids. We, since I, I approved the video, since it's my intention that we have.
Who I am.
We have issued, I think we're revisiting that, and there's always going to be diversity and inclusions built into our advisory program, because that's part of our character education, that's part of our citizenship, that's part of teaching our students to be acceptance of one another. But we are revisiting that, and we will move forward with our advisory program, making our kids well-rounded, having those discussions where they can be critical thinkers in accepting one another.
I do believe that this is, this should stay at home. If somebody wants to teach their kid this, it's for the parents, not teachers, and not the advisors. Come on, it's real. With me and Cindy and a few others here telling them, critical race, absolutely not. I found the video, we emailed you and asked for the video.
I agree with you.
And if you're, and if you're jumping me over it, I would just.
I'm just asking you to come, help me.
Well, what I'm gonna help is, if I were teaching, if I were the advisor, I have an idea how I could use that to try to teach a kid.
This should never be in the classroom.
This is how you should think about this, as far as I'm concerned. Now, what do you kids think? What do you people think about this? Have you ever seen this happen or that happen? I can understand where it's coming from. It's part of the middle school process where they're trying to mold these kids into good citizens. A good citizen is not a racist. Would you agree with that? Would you agree with that?
You're making kids racist by this.
Would you agree with that?
No.
That you, you don't think that a good citizen is not racist?
Watching these videos?
That's a bad citizen.
I haven't seen the video. But what I'm trying, is there anybody here who disagrees with me?
They're all racist by this.
Are, are you disagreeing with me that a good citizen should not be racist?
That's your main.
That's, that's what they're trying to teach, I believe, through this.
Do you want to hear the video?
I'll go home and I'll listen to it. I'll go home and I'll listen to it. I'll listen to it. I haven't, I'm not aware of the problem.
Because it doesn't have white little kids here. And I'm Hispanic.
It was part of the program. We do not.
So, wait, 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 hold on, hold on. This is getting out of control. Number two is that I understand that you recognize something, and they're, okay, and the fact that if it got through, if different people's interpretation of it is whatever, your interpretation is it falls in this category, you're not happy. You spoke to the administrator, they have stopped and they're looking into it, and we're reacting to the concerns. I don't know, we're not gonna control every piece of literature article that comes in this school. If there is something that comes in inappropriate and you get to the administrator, and they do not react to your concerns, and then you take it to Dr. Perry, and he does not react to your concerns, you bring it to this board. But I do believe that the chain of command is working, and it, and I mean, you heard it from the video.
Heard him say that they were reevaluating it.
So I brought it here.
Okay, but they both said that they were reevaluating. Okay, so, with that, I'm gonna call for a mo.
I wanna, April Katsaphanis, 201 Morning Miss Drive, going off of the CRT that Leah's talking about, I saw that video. You guys have to see the video for very well reasons. I could be that girl in that video because I'm blonde and white. I take offense to it. My daughter's here tonight, my other one's at home. I teach my kids, first thing, stranger danger. I've taught them inappropriate touching. I've taught them about drugs and alcohol. Never in a million years did I think I was gonna have to tell my daughters, if somebody makes you feel ashamed that you're a white child about the color of your skin, nobody, whether you're white, black, brown, yellow, you should not feel ashamed of your skin color. I get anti-bullying, we need it, because there are kids out there that prey on other kids. We do need to address that. This video was not appropriate. I encourage and urge all of you to take a look at this.
Mr. Dolph, share with the board.
Also, you know, I did, you brought it up, Mr. O'Neil, last month, or last month at the school board meeting about CRT. It's been on my radar since last year. I actually called you, Dr. Perry, at the beginning of the year, and I know you're busy. I didn't get a phone call back. I waited a week and I called, talked to your secretary. I'm not trying to throw you under the bus, but this is important.
I return phone calls, I don't know.
You have, in the past.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know.
I didn't get that, I didn't, and I talked to your secretary.
So sure I got a message then, because I return phone calls.
Okay, well, I didn't get, you have called me in the past. I did not get a return phone call, and I'm not throwing you under the bus.
I'm just saying I would not not call somebody back.
Okay, but I didn't get a call, so neither here nor there, but whatever. So, you know, this is very important. We, my husband's Greek, and I'm just gonna go off for a minute, because my first grader last year came home and said, Mom, this little boy likes me, and he looks like daddy. My husband is tan, he's Mediterranean skin. And next, I went in the next day, picked her up, she said, Mommy, that's the little boy that likes me. Cute as a button. He was, he was a black kid, which is fine. He wasn't brown, he wasn't brown, he wasn't, like, my daughters are tan. But I had to laugh, because children are void of discrimination until we corrupt them and put that in their minds. She did not know color. She didn't care if you were white, black, brown, whatever. She was just giggling because the little boy liked her. That, out of a child's mouth to say to me, he looks like daddy. Well, he doesn't really look like daddy, but she thought he did. So, I mean, we as adults, we say children are our priority, let's make them our priority. Because if this stuff's coming into our school, children are not our priority. We are corrupting our kids. I really do encourage you to take a look at this video because it was inappropriate. Anti-bullying is one thing. Teaching kids that because they are white, that they are the problem, and they are the evil and the root cause of everything going to hell in a handbag, pardon my French, in this country right now, is not the right avenue to take. And I tell my daughters, you owe nobody nothing, and remember that. You work for everything you have, as did I, as did your daddy, as did my parents and my husband's parents. That is what you do. Nobody, nobody will tell you that you are wrong, and nobody will tell you that you owe them anything. So please, in the future, get this on your radar because it is important. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
[applause] Question carries. Because.
Question, because as the PTA president, I have gotten this asked a lot, and it might, you can tell me if it's due to the agenda, but what exactly is, is there safety issues being dealt with at the middle school? Like, I know there's no major construction, but the all-day kindergarten, which I'm a big proponent of, I know that parents have a lot of concerns about the condition of the middle school. Are there things still being fixed with all-day kindergarten going forward?
We, we have met with the architect. Uh, Dr. Perry has got other bids to do things. That there is active involvement in both the middle school and the high school to address concerns of bringing the cost to this board.
Okay.
I'll give you an example. We got a roof that leaks.
Yes, I know that, yeah.
So we're, you know, those things need to be addressed.
Okay. I just want you guys to know that, I mean, I do have, parents come to me a lot, and I do understand all-day kindergarten. I'm surprised we don't have all-day kindergarten already, but you guys also have to know that parents out there are considering other middle school options because they don't feel our middle school is safe too. We have to look at that too. So, that's it. Thank you very much for letting me ask.
Hi. I noticed a lot of people weren't very happy with some of the answers today, so I'm just gonna ask for myself and for everybody. When is the next school board election? When is Dr. Perry's contract up, and when is the school solicitor's contract up? My contract's up at the end of next year. And next year. School solicitor's year-to-year contract. Year-to-year contract. The board, as far as the board elections go, they're in November, they run for four-year, four-year terms.
I think I have three years left.
Got three years on this. Alright, we'll see you guys.
And I was gonna make a comment earlier.
Yes.
I highly recommend, okay? And I was in education 38 years, okay? And I used to tend boarding meetings, but until you're, until you're sitting here, okay? So I highly recommend to everybody out there in your area is to run for a school board and sit over here to help make these decisions. I think you'll have a different outlook than you do right now, and some of you do. But I highly recommend you at least do one term on a school board. I think it's very important that you get involved and do it. Wherever you, wherever you're at, whatever district or region, run for the school board. I highly recommend it.
Don't come with just an agenda. Don't come with a personal agenda. Because people have done that in the past.
Yeah.
I wanna get rid of this person or hire this person. That's not the reason to run.
That's one of my kids left alone.
Yeah.
Thanks.
We're gonna take you and then we're gonna.
I'm gonna ask a question based off of what he just said. You look at other districts in our area, it is extremely clear on their website when their school board members' terms are up. It is not clear on our website. It's not clear what region you represent, and it's not clear when your term ends. We please add that to the district website so that we as a public can be more informed.
I think it's a great idea.
When the opportunity might arise for us to take your position or run for your position.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll tell you, I'm up. I'm a Minnaca representative, so I'm up this, this time, so I'm running in November.
I was able to do that research to find out myself, but everybody sitting here isn't gonna take that time to do that. So, if we could have that right there, so everybody can just click on the website and see that.
That should be on there.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to Mr. Zeritsky, second, Mr. O'Neal, all in.